Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Thank you. Of Bellingham City Council for October 13th, 2014. Couple of announcements. There will be a public hearing on the Rental Safety Program on Monday, October 27th, at the 7:00 meeting. There will be a public hearing on the Preliminary Biennial Budget on Monday, October 27th, as well, at the 7:00 meeting. And, Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Teri Borneman.
Here.
Jean Conickson.
Here.
Kathy Layman.
Here.
Michael Illquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Jack Weiss is excused. Okay, we're gonna start out with our 15-minute public comment period. I'll read the names of the next three people. Please come down at that time and introduce yourself. And, you may speak on any subject before us, except items for a public hearing this evening. And, there are two. Those things are a public hearing to consider a request to add a comprehensive plan amendment to the docket for review in 2014 and 15, and a public hearing and resolution for the 2014 to 2019 Water Use Efficiency Program. So, anything other than those two items, you may step up and speak to us about during this time. And, it looks like we have quite a few folks here this evening, so if you want to speak less than three minutes, that's okay, too. First up, Ken Holmes, followed by Dick Conneboy and Elliot Smith.
The...I've tried to explain a few times in the past, and I figured if I held up a $5 bill, it might be easier to understand, rather than talk in some esoteric term. This rental licensing that you're talking about passing, I sort of think, what if you did pass it? What happens? Well, you're gonna put fees. And, you're gonna go put penalties in the ordinance. But, right to start with, you're gonna put fees, and it's gonna take money, actual money, out of the pockets of somebody, and it starts with the landlord. And, if the landlord owes this $5, is he gonna just let it go? I don't think so. Or not many of them. They're gonna pass on that fee. And, who do they pass that on to? Tenants. Well, I hear a lot of talk about the importance of Western students, because they are tenants. So, if you pass a fee on the landlord, the tenants are gonna end up paying it in the end. Now, what does that tenant do? Does he pass it on? Who would he pass it on to? Or she? They have a hard time with school costs, anyway, these days. You hear that. So, what are they gonna do? They're gonna call mom, dad? They're gonna borrow it on their student loan? They're gonna work some more part-time hours? Well, what if they can't get the part-time hours? And, if they pay $5 out, how much do they have to earn in order to net $5? So, before you start passing ordinances that cost money...now, last year, this very timeframe, I was here trying to tell you, please don't pass this real estate increase tax to fund the mayor's budget. And, the budget's coming out, and what do we hear? We've got a shortfall again. Now, what happened to that million dollars that you got from the hospital? That million dollars is gonna go on and on, but you're gonna put a $5 on the college students, are you? Each and every month? Year after year? It ends up being a derelict tax, just like those derelict crab traps that you heard about. So, thousands of tenants have clamored for this, I understand. Have you seen them? I haven't. Have you? Are there thousands of you wanting to raise rent? I haven't heard it. Why does the council want to raise the rent? That might be a good campaign slogan in the coming year. These people raised your rent.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Dick Conneboy, followed by Elliot Smith and Charles Law.
Good evening. My name's Dick Conneboy. I live on South 46th Street, and I'd like to speak briefly about what you discussed this afternoon with respect to the sale of the open space on South 46th Street. When I moved here to Bellingham about 12 years ago, one of the selling points that the realtor made to me while I was purchasing the house was that we have this nice, almost one-acre spot of open space that the city owns, and nobody's ever going to build there. And, now, I find that we're putting the...thinking of putting this thing up for sale, and I think it's a bad idea. It's not really suitable, I agree, for a park, but it is suitable for open space and habitat for animals, and we have plenty of them up there. You know, deer, and raccoons, and coyotes, and whatnot. They all use that area very much. It's part of the corridor for wildlife that goes along Samish Ridge and then down into the Holly Tract along Nevada. But, the site itself, with respect to development, is questionable. I don't have a terrain map here today...this evening, but I urge you to take a look at it before you make any decisions on this later on. It's part of a hill. It's got a ridge running right through the middle, and it's got lots of water flowing around it and through it. So, it may not be a developable parcel. Also, the 46th Street right-of-way that goes to the west of this parcel is on a steep hill, and it may cause problems for somebody to put a road in there to have access to the parcel. Again, this is a one-time sale of something that we can never retrieve. That's open space now, and it can be open space forever. If we sell it, we may get a fistful of dollars, but we'll never have that open space back again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Elliot Smith? Please, folks, hold your applause. We try to create an atmosphere where there's no support or action for something or against something, so we can create a safe atmosphere for everybody to have their opinion heard.
Elliot Smith, I live in Fairhaven. It's a short day in a big city, so I will make my three points quickly. One, 72-hour parking. Good, do it. I take the bus to work, and then I have to come home and move my car, so I don't get a ticket. The 24-hour parking rule is stupid. Please, 72 hours, please and thank you. Two, clean green. Keep it open, keep the cost reasonable. So what if public works loses a few dollars on it? It's a public service that our community needs. Please keep it open. Please and thank you. Three, Coast Salish Day. Good, do it. Respect our Native American brothers and sisters. Please and thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Next up, Charles...folks, like I said, please hold your applause. Charles Law, followed by Beth Brownfield and Patrick Austin Freeland.
Charles Law, Bellingham. I would first like to acknowledge the Coast Salish people, Lummi and Nuksek tribes, who have, before contact, gathered here for many important ceremonies, as well as storytelling, feasting, and gift-giving. All was done in relationship between family and earth people, human and otherwise. On December...September 5th, around 7:15, Terry Lee Bradley was struck and killed...technology. Was struck and killed while attempting to cross Alabama Street to take the 331 WTA bus. Terry Lee had limited mobility and was 62-years-old. Terry Lee lived just a short distance from my home. When will the city respond to the death of Terry Lee? Why must we endure outdated and obsolete road engineering that not only puts our lives at risk, but also the person behind the wheel? Widening streets to alleviate congestion gives motorists a dangerous sense of open road with no limits or obstacles in their way. And, it only creates more congestion. It is overly designed with too many traffic lanes. It's positive feedback loop that has no positive results in our neighborhood. Lower the speed limit now. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Beth Brownfield.
Beth Brownfield, Bellingham, Washington, Fielding Avenue, and from the Bellingham Unitarian Fellowship Native American Connections Committee. We begin this gathering by acknowledging with humility that this land is a traditional territory of the Lummi and Nuksek peoples. Their presence is imbued in these mountains, valleys, waterways, and shorelines. Let us give thanks and honor to nurture our relationship with these people and their homelands where we sit and stand today. In my Bellingham Unitarian Fellowship congregation, some committee chairs, staff, and lay leaders, at their discretion, open committee meetings, occasional Sunday morning services, and public meetings with such a statement. In 2007, the mayors of every town in Watcomb County and Pete Cremon, then county executive, signed a proclamation honoring the first inhabitants of these lands and these waters. This was the first time that our indigenous neighbors had ever been officially acknowledged in this manner. This statement was read by Mayor Tim Douglas on July 7th, 2007, in Boulevard Park, and the day was called Tribal Journey Day. Printed copies of this proclamation were presented to tribal officials of participating nations and to every indigenous person that attended this event. In July, Lummi Nation hosted tens of thousands of people attending the event, which was called Paddle to Lummi, of the Tribal Canoe Journey. The Bellingham City Council donated $5,000 in support of that, as did Watcomb County Council, and the Ferndale City Council donated $10,000 in hotel and motel tax money. In total, over $70,000 in cash, goods and donations, and volunteer service came from the wider Watcomb County to support Lummi's great hospitality in offering one of the most memorable canoe journey days in history. This tradition was renamed Coast Salish Day and was repeated again in canoe landings and cultural sharing in Boulevard Park in the summers of 2008, '09, and '11. Thus, a new relationship between our respective communities became a reality, and many collaborative people-to-people expressions have been nurtured out of this relationship based on acknowledgement and respect. Acknowledgement is healing, both for those that acknowledge and for those that receive the acknowledgement. Speaking the truth is healing, both for those that acknowledge the truth and for those to which the truth must be spoken. What we convey with this resolution is an acknowledgement and respect for Coast Salish people, the first inhabitants of these lands and waters. It is another step in building bridges between our communities. Thank you. May it be so.
Thank you, Beth. Patrick, followed by Marion Bedell and Lloyd Zimmerman.
(speaking Spanish) My name is Patrick Austin Freeland, and I am Wind Clan of the Muskogee Creek Nation. I was born in the heart of the nation in Oatmogee, Oklahoma, and my family lived there for four generations, basically from the days of boarding school to the days of activism, and then eventually moved to Kansas City and then moved out here. When I was growing up, I was...became an Eagle Scout and was also a member of the Knights of Columbus. And, I always was instilled with a sense of duty to my community, to my nation, and my world. That being said, I was also a graduate of Haskell &amp; Nations University, and recently a degree in ecological sciences and engineering at Purdue University. And, I've come to realize the value of accurate information in both decision-making, but also in a sense of betterment. I've observed firsthand the incongruence of historic record, along with the societal necessity to lambast a hero. Ultimately, it's designed to appeal to the emotional good within all of us. But unfortunately, the sordid history of Cristobal Cologne is well documented. It's freely accessible by anyone with access to information technology. Some feel that Columbus Day is a celebration of the spread of Catholicism into a new world. Others appeal to the idea that the entrepreneurial spirit of enterprise encapsulated within discovery should inspire Americans and the world to follow their ambition and dare to dream dangerously. These ideas are nice. However, these ideas are wrong. The reality of genocide, enslavement, and human denigration based on cultural differences must not cloud our collective tradition for the sake of questionable emotional appeal. Our Constitution, on the other hand, is a much better symbol to celebrate, as it embodies our highest ideals and stems from the indigenous and sacred ideals of we, the people. The Iroquois, the Muskogee, and several others have these foundations, and then was soon formed the foundation of the Constitution for the United States of America. So ultimately, I commend this council and the decision to, number one, eliminate in the past the idea of a Columbus Day, but number two, to really embrace the idea of the local indigenous people that really kind of constitute what this place is and the meaning of that sense of place. Furthermore, I really like the idea of it being based in this locality. As I understand, in Hawaii, they call it like Discovery Day, and in South Dakota, it's like Native Americans' Day. I like this idea of all the different recognitions being rather heterogeneous, as homogeneous problems, as evidenced by history. So, thank you, and I feel that regardless of whatever day this is to be called, that today, it's a good day.
Thank you, Patrick. Marion Bedell, followed by Lloyd Zimmerman and Matt Petrini.
Good evening, Marion Bedell, South Side, Bellingham. I also stand to speak in favor of this resolution supporting the indigenous people. Many of you know that I work in the community, own a number of environmental and caring issues. You may not know that I was raised in the lands of the Caddo Indians down in the south. And then, I worked in Pennsylvania. Then, I worked in Hawaii, where the theme of the land in their language is "Umaukeeaia, Okaaina Ikapono," which translates to English as "the life of the land is perpetuated by living right by it." Then, I lived and worked in Brazil, and I am proud to say that the necklace that I'm wearing is a necklace made by the native tribes in the Amazon Basin of Brazil, sent to me by my son's family in Brazil. We should and must respect the indigenous tribes who were here long before we Caucasians were. The way they live, the way they respect the land, the water, the culture, was something that I learned many, many, many years ago with my contacts with all these various nations and activities. I came to believe that those people really knew how to live and live as community, caring for the future in a very marvelous way. And therefore, I again strongly recommend and encourage you to pass this resolution and declare your support for the respect for these indigenous tribes. A related issue, very quickly, that was partly about water. You all know also that I'm very much involved in water, and in fact, I'm now an active member of the planning unit organized by many local governments some years ago, working on a group, working under the rule of the WIREA-1, Water Resources Inventory Area, which is basically a community-built program headed towards resolving a fair and adequate and respectful resolution of the distribution of our water in Watcomb County, in the Nuksek River Basin especially. So, I ask you to watch for and support the work that we bring forward to come to a peaceful and beneficial resolution of the management of our second-most scarce and valuable resource, water. The only one that beats it is air. We all want to breathe. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Lloyd Zimmerman.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm very proud to be here this Columbus Day and to speak out in support of the indigenous thing that you may have in front of you. Everyone likes to feel proud, and I've been here...I'm native, born in Bellingham, and to...and to see what great progress our neighbors have made in the indigenous people, and knowing that this is a historic night, and I'm here to help support you in doing this historic decision, I say there's emotion happening. Seattle's been first, and I think Bellingham can be second, and it just starts something great again from the northwest that really sends a strong message across America, worth the first Americans. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Matt Petrini, followed by Michael Vendiola and Marie Christensen.
My name is Matt Petrini. I am the Clean Energy Program Manager for Resources for Sustainable Communities. We're a local environmental nonprofit here in Bellingham, and I will keep my comments really brief, because I don't want to make this a long thing for you guys, but we...I'm just here to express my support for changing the name of today's holiday to Coast Salish Day. I think it is a grossly more appropriate idea to name today after our indigenous neighbors with whom we share our community and our environment, and who have been strong leaders for both of those things for longer than we've been here. So, I really respect the work that you guys are doing here, and I think this is tremendously important, and I really thank you for your leadership. I think it's really amazing. So, I wanted to just express that, and that's all I have for you tonight, and thanks a lot.
Thanks, Matt. Michael Vendiola.
Greeting you, friends and relatives, and our Coast Salish and our Columbian Chasen. Just welcoming you to this land that comes from the Lummi and Nuksek people, and I'm here, of course, to support the Coast Salish Day that's under consideration, and I think it's a beautiful thing that you're considering, based upon what Beth said earlier, you know, the good work that this community has done in fostering relationships with the native communities, and I just want to echo that, this really important work. And, myself, I'm in the Bellingham city limits. I make my home in the Lummi Nation on Haxton Way. I'm a Swenamish Indian tribal community member, and I worked in...I've worked in education for many years. I continue to do work in that arena. I was at Western for 13 years coordinating the Ethnic Student Center, and I have some students here that are also supporting this initiative. And, I also worked at Skagit Valley College, and Northwest Indian College, and Watcomb Community College when I was one-years-old. No, just kidding.[1433.13][1433.13](Laughter) But I do have a long history in education, mainly trying to establish what you're considering tonight, which is establishing meaningful relationships. And, we've always...I've always tried to find a place for Native Americans in higher education and looking for ways for our communities to come together. And so, I really appreciate what you're trying to do tonight. I mean, it's really meaningful to me. And, one of my former students was one of the folks who wrote the resolution down in Seattle, so we're celebrating. He's waiting for my text to see what you all do here tonight. So, we're feeling really happy, and again, you know, just echoing the words of Beth, that, you know, the good work that Bellingham and Watcomb County has done already to support things like this is really important, because it just fosters relationships and brings people together. So, I appreciate the time to speak with you tonight. (speaking Spanish).
Thank you, Michael. Marie Christensen, followed by Larry Hildes and Karen Weal.
Hi, my name is Marie Christensen. I, along with a group of parents, recently opened a performing arts school on Holly Street, Opus Performing Arts, mostly for children and adults as well. I am a recent transplant to this area, but my aunt and uncle have lived here for many years, so I'm here because I'm a bit concerned about the health of the city as I see it. Since we've moved in, the graffiti has diminished greatly, but pardon me, the urinating and the defecating and the sleeping in our entryway have continued. The police have been very lovely when I have called them and have told me that they are very limited in what they can do, that they are stretched thin, and there aren't very many resources. So, I'm really here probably in an improper forum, but to ask for some guidance and some assistance and some suggestions of what we can possibly do. And, am I to expect...I understand nobody else has asked you any questions, but could you maybe just direct me, or...who?[1557.23][1557.23](Laughter)
As Teri points at the mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Hildes.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the council, Madam Mayor. I also want to acknowledge that we are standing on Coast Salish land, on Lummi and Nuksek land, and I thank you for the privilege of standing on this land and for living on this I wanted to give a slightly different but harmonious perspective on this. 1492 is a year that is not a high mark of history for multiple reasons. The same year the Spanish king and queen Ferdinand and Isabella sent Columbus here, they expelled all of the Jews and all of the Muslims from Spain, and both were part of the same Inquisition. We were in Spain two years ago, and the remnants of where there was a large and vibrant Jewish community is still an open wound from that, and it is part of the same genocide. Anyone who was the other, which is everyone who was not Christian and white, was fair game, and the people who did not leave got tortured, got killed in horrific ways, and then they brought that here and committed genocide on steroids here, because not only were the people not Christian, they also weren't white. This is not something to commemorate with a holiday for the person who perpetuated it, and I thank you, Roxanne, for bringing the proposal. I thank you all for supporting it. It's an honor to live in a community that is going to make this statement, and as a Jew, I cannot tell you how good it makes me feel. There are lots of wonderful Italians to celebrate. This is not one of them. And, thank you all.
Thank you, Larry. Karen?
My husband's tall. My name is Karen Weil. I live just outside the limits of Bellingham, but we have our business here, and it's very...Bellingham is so near and dear to our hearts, and this proposal and this resolution is just making me so incredibly proud to live here, and I want to thank you for that. Right before we came here, we participated in a celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day out at Northwest Indian College, and then went straight to Western, where they were having a debate, Coast Salish Day versus Columbus Day, at an...I'm not sure what to call it, if it's an organization, Kylie...I'm not...it's called Courageous Conversations, and it's run by Christine French, who's a professor. And, one of the things that in that conversation that we were having was that she was showed the Fox News piece on what was happening in Seattle, and then a couple of the comments. And, one of the comments was, "Anyone who wishes to have an Indigenous Peoples' Day should move to another country." Well, if the author is white, then that should include him, because he doesn't belong on this land either. None of us who are not native belong on this land. It is not our land. We stole it. And, anybody who thinks differently... We stole it, and anybody who thinks differently should take a look at history. Beth brought up the celebration in 2007. It is my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, either Michael or Candace, whether or not, my understanding is that was the first potlatch that the Lummi had in 70 years. We banned potlatch, which was their way of maintaining their culture. The other thing I learned at the Courageous Conversations that Christine French was holding was that part of why we got Columbus Day was because there was a massacre of Italian-Americans, and they asked for a day to celebrate the Italian culture. And this became, at first it was not a national holiday, and then later was changed into a national holiday, but then that was at a time when Italians and Irish and anybody who wasn't WASP was considered non-white. And by the time Martin Luther King came along, the Italian-American community was speaking out against giving civil rights to Black people. Rather than getting into competing victimizations, 512 years compared to, you know, 100 and whatever years, all right, I would really urge the council to talk to Professor French, and ask her to set up another Courageous Conversation where we could talk about the real history and what's truly happened, and then celebrate all of our cultural histories.
Thank you, Karen. Dean Tuckerman, followed by Kate Harrison and David Kresny. Kresny?
I really, members of the council, members of the public, I really have very little to say at this moment. The, I think you are going to do the right thing if you already haven't, I'm not exactly sure the process on this exactly, and you're going to support Coast Salish Day, which I support. I lived in Berkeley when they, when the first Indigenous Peoples' Day was, was passed, and I, and it was a major thing, and it was very important to the Indigenous people there and to the rest of the community, because there was, there was no opposition to it, there wasn't even really opposition from the Italian-Americans in Berkeley. They were very supportive of it, because, I mean, there were people from San Francisco that were opposed, but that was very small. And I think, right, I think, right, I think that this is very important that we're doing this, not just for the Indigenous people, but for everyone to realize the history, the history of both oppression and resistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Kate Harrison? Is it Kate Harrison who wants to speak? Okay, sure, and there should be a microphone up there that you can use as well, right in the corner there. Thank you. You might need to press a button to make sure the mic's on.
Well, I just wanted to come and show my support for changing Columbus Day to Coast Salish Day. I do believe that it is important to honor, oh my gosh, sorry, I just got here, this is making me nervous, I don't normally public speak, but I do think that this is a step in a direction that we should be heading in, to acknowledge the land that we live on, to acknowledge the people who still live here and who are impacted by colonialism and the actions of Columbus. I think that we could honor somebody different on this day, and I think that this should be a day where we stand in solidarity and mourning with Indigenous peoples, and acknowledge that, you know, we're still here, and, at any rate, I don't know what else to say. Is anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much for the chance to speak.
Thank you, Kate. David Kresny? David will be followed by Theodore Wieland and Wendy Harris.
Press it till you see a red light come on. All right, I have a red light now. Hi, my name's David, and I wanted to speak a little bit from my personal experience as a Jewish American, and how important this is related to my own perspective and experience. And so my family comes from Germany, and essentially we're all murdered in the Holocaust. And I say we come from Germany, we don't know where we come from, because even before the Holocaust, there was this, this system of colonization, of imperialism, of conquest was continuing. And so my family left Germany right after the Holocaust, because it wasn't our home anymore, and in fact, my, my family don't identify as German, we call ourselves Dutch, because that memory is so painful. And I'll never forget, my dad wanted us to see Germany when I was a kid, and I remember standing at the border, and I've never seen my dad so scared before, and so, so nervous, and so felt so unsafe there. And I say all this because the same thing has happened in the United States in the colonization of America, it was a Holocaust. And so I think about, as a Jewish American, if my family had stayed in Germany, if there was a Hitler Day, and how that might make me feel. And given that, the Indigenous peoples in America have stayed here, like my family, who, who left Germany, and not only that, they disproportionately serve in our military, they're disproportionately supporting civic causes and patriotic, and I just think the least we can do is a symbolic gesture is not to celebrate Christopher Columbus, who is a symbol of this genocide. As I said, if, if there was a Hitler Day, I expect, and I, I know the world would stand up for the Jewish people and say, this is not okay, we can't deny the Holocaust happened, we can't celebrate Hitler as a hero. And so I hope that that experience, my own experience with this, will help you see this from a different perspective. I think it's a small symbolic gesture, it's not enough, but the least we can do is stop praising Columbus. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Theodore Wieland, followed by Wendy Harris and Bob Burr.
Hello?
Hello?
I support changing Columbus Day to Coast Salish Day. Thank you.
Thank you.[1068.65][1068.65](laughter) Wendy Harris, followed by Bob Burr and Nick Courtney?
Wendy Harris, like everybody else here, I'm here to support Coast Salish Day, but I would like to be, I'd like this to be more than a meaningless gesture. I would like it to be something that we absorb and, and that we follow, that we follow the wisdom of the Native people in their, in their respect for the land, in their understanding that you cannot kill the wildlife in the land that sustains you. And yet, right now, as we speak, as we're talking about Coast Salish Day, we're engaged in genocide against wildlife, and nobody's speaking out against that. I listened today while you discussed the Salish Crest Open Space North plat that is proposed to be sold for development, and there were things that weren't said. We weren't told that this is part of the Park Plan, which is known as the Pro Plan, Pro as in parks, recreation, and open space. Open space is something that is distinct from parks and recreation. It is intended, under the GMA and under our comp plan, to conserve habitat and biodiversity, to protect sensitive lands and watersheds, and to improve the quality of our life by not having every ounce of ground developed, and that wasn't even discussed. And I'm urging you not tonight to vote, to bring this forward for public vote. It's not that I'm against a public vote, it's that we're given this in a piecemeal fashion. The mayor has told us that she asked her staff to identify pieces of park property to surplus. I'd like to know what all those properties are, I want to see the patterns that emerge, I want to see what watersheds are affected, I'd like to know what impacts that's having on our wildlife and our water quality. That Samish crest that you're talking about flows into Watcom Creek. Watcom Creek has a pocket estuary, Patton Creek has a pocket estuary, those have been designated for high protection. We have not done the work we need to do to analyze our wildlife and our habitat, to establish corridors, or to establish adequate protection. The plan that the city's working on now is a master plan for restoration. Restoration occurs after the damage is done. We need a plan that protects what is in place, and preserving open space protects what is in space, in place. So please, tell us what is in store in the big picture, stop piecemealing things, and I'd like to know how the funds are going to be used, because the funds for this property are being used in Maritime Heritage Park in a way that's contradictory to what was intended when we first cleaned up that land. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next up is Bob Burr, but I wonder if we can figure out.
Yeah, Linda's gonna shut down.
Thanks, Linda. Don't want to distract from what you have to say there, Bob.
Bob Burr, 1140, 1130 Fortieth Street, and I'm here with a short and singular message, and that's, goodbye Columbus Day, welcome Coast Salish Day. Happy Coast Salish Day to everyone here.
Thank you, Bob. Nick Courtney, followed by Candace Wilson, and if there's anyone else who wants to speak, please come forward at this time and form a line at the door.
Thank you, Council. My name's Nicholas Courtney, I'm a member of the Makaw Nation and a Western Washington student studying a master's in teaching, and I did my undergraduate there as well, as well as being a part of the Native American Student Union, the Center of Education Equity and Diversity, as well as the Ethnic Student Center. And we would like to thank, and I would like to thank everyone for their words today, I would like to acknowledge where we stand as Lummi and Nuksek land, and I would like to throw my support in for Coast Salish Day. I think that there's a power of words and a power of diction, and having it be named Coast Salish Day honors where we stand and brings acknowledgement that we as Indigenous people are not one homogeneous group, as depicted by popular culture in America, and that in building this and bringing community together, I would also like to acknowledge a House Bill 1495, which is a Native American curriculum called Since Time Immemorial, and the power of language, I think, can be illustrated in that, which was a House Bill that, whose original language was to require Native American knowledge and being, but the language was switched to highly suggested, and the power that that can have on a community when kids do not see themselves represented in material in their educational careers, and the power that that has, and I would like to spread acknowledgement to that, to maybe press the Bellingham School District, acknowledging where we stand as traditional Native lands, that those children know where they stand and see themselves in the curriculum, and are not forced or pressured to go to a certain school to learn their own knowledge and history, as that continues a genocidal notion, and to move past an empathetic notion, but more stand in solidarity with each other, and acknowledge the communities that we reside, the Indigenous communities, the student communities, as well as the businesses here in Bellingham, and to rather not separate our communities, but find ways to join them in solidarity, and propose that a longhouse at Western Washington would promote that, and acknowledge where we stand as a community, and believe that not only the city council, the school, and the tribes should look into doing that, as Evergreen State College has done, as the University of Washington has done, as they are leaders in the state for that initiative, and I thank you all for your time, and thank you for your words.
Thank you, Nicholas. Looks like last up is Candace Wilson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Okay.
Good evening, distinguished council of the City of Bellingham. My dear friends and relatives, thank you, each and every one of you, for being here this evening to witness this momentous day in history. I am Candace Wilson, I am a former council member of the great Lummi Nation, the former vice chair of three years, serving for nine years on the Lummi Indian Business Council. I come to you this evening from an event where our families had gathered to celebrate Laktimish. It's who we are. Yes, we did have traditional foods, oysters, clams, clam chowder, fried bread, and yes, us Lummi's do tend to arrive a little bit late sometimes.[1572.51][1572.51](laughter) On my way in here, I was hoping not to be late, to share a few words in support of celebrating Coast Salish Day in honor of Indigenous peoples. I would like to share with you a letter of support that Chairman Baloo had written and turned into the City of Bellingham email. Support of the official name change of the Columbus Day for Coast Salish Day. Dear Council Members, the Lummi Nation is aware of the City of Bellingham's intentions of remaining, renaming the sacred Monday in every, the second Monday in every October from Columbus Day to Coast Salish Day. The Lummi Nation fully supports the name change from Columbus Day to Coast Salish Day. The result of the name change would be of honor and celebration to the local tribes, the Lummi Nation and the Nuksek tribe, and other Coast Salish tribes that have ties to this region. The Lummi Nation does not support nor recognize Columbus Day because of the horrific acts of violence, greed, colonization, and genocide forced upon the Indigenous people. It's been over 500 years since Christopher Columbus began his quest of genocide and colonization of the New World. Indigenous people were assimilated, annihilated, forced into slavery, and murdered at the helm of Christopher Columbus. The Coast Salish tribes have been occupying this area since time immemorial and continue to preserve, promote, and protect their way of life. These tribes are only 150 years removed from the signing of the Treaty of the United States, Point Elliott. The Lummi Nation was treated in similar fashion by the US government by blankets laced with smallpox and other diseases that led, led to the pursuit of desecration of our people, and our population dwindled from thousands to hundreds. Again, we support the change of Columbus Day to Coast Salish Day, to honor and celebrate Shalangin, the way of life, as well as the culture and traditions of the Lummi Nation and Nuksek tribe, and all Coast Salish tribes. Tim Baloo, Chairman, Lummi Nation. Hi, Shka Siem. Siem Naschelacha. Hi, Shka.
Thank you, Candace.
Madam President?
Yeah.
We've done this in the past, can we move the resolution up now and vote on it?
Most definitely, yes.
So those people can see this?
Yes.
Okay. We've done it before. Go ahead, Rox.[1796.11] Go ahead, Rock.
Where was it?
Three.
Thank you. Page 81 in our packet.
Did I go? First of all, I'm going to try to say this without getting emotional. It's going to be a little hard. The chairman of my tribe, when I first moved up here to take a job with my government, said, "You know, you're going to see and experience things all the time in Watcom County that are going to make you so proud to be a member of the Nukusak Indian Tribe." And everything that I just experienced here tonight has done just that. I feel so, so fortunate that I can live in a community such as Bellingham that so supports our tribes, that tries to develop an understanding, that wants to create the cultural bridges between our two communities in highly respectful ways. I brought this forward just thinking it'd be something that we could render, something we could make a decision about, something that we could help out with. I didn't know that the world would start to watch. I'm not saying this for the sake of myself. I'm saying all this for the sake of what my ancestors went through and for the hope that every single generation here and every single generation after will have a better life and a better way of life. Also, I just think, and I hope, and I pray to our ancestors, that this day will turn into such a great celebration, a celebration of culture, of healing, and respect. And I really want to thank this council for ways that they have supported this thus far and for all of the community input that we've received. It means so much to me as a tribal member. It means so much to us as Coast Salish people. And OCM, Hai Shka. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. So the... Sorry. Do you want to move it?
Go ahead.
I think you should move it.
So I move that we pass the resolution for every second Monday in October to institute Coast Salish Day and remove Columbus Day.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Terry Bornham.
Yeah. I was really proud to be able to stand with you in bringing this resolution forward. My vote today, I want to... This is hard. I want to dedicate to Ima Jean Bowen. Ima Jean Bowen was a member of the Upper Skagit tribe. She was my political, one of my biggest political mentors. She was the chair of the State Rainbow Coalition. She was the first Native American to chair a county political party when she led the Skagit Democrats. Unfortunately, Ima Jean's not here. Although her sons, Joe Bowen and others, carry on some of her legacy in Skagit County. We share this land with the Coast Salish people. We share resources. We have a shared tradition here. Not always the greatest tradition, but we have worked really hard. And since, I know since I've been on the council and Jean, we've seen tremendous strides made in terms of government-to-government relationships with the Nukusak, with the Lummi tribes, to the South, to the Swaminish. Because we do, we share so many things. And we, and we need to move forward. Somebody brought up that this should not be just a day. And I agree that this should be not only Coast Salish Day, but this should be the beginning of stronger relationships, of a government-to-government relationships with our, with the Nukusak Nation, the Lummi Nation, and others. And, you know, this day is an acknowledgement and respect of the traditions that have gone on. We do, we sit on Lummi, traditional Lummi lands. And we acknowledge it. And for me, it is a true privilege to be able to share such a magnificent place. And so I'm definitely supporting this. And thank you for, Roxanne, for bringing it up to begin with.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else would like to speak? Michael.
I'll definitely be supporting this resolution. I think, Terry, you said it well when you said we share this land. I don't view this as a resolution just for the Coast Salish people. I view this as a resolution for me and my family. My family's been here for generations. This is the land we grew up in. And it's very important for me to honor and feel connected to the people who've been here longer, far longer than I have, the first peoples here. So I don't think this is for the Native American tribes. This is for Bellingham. This is how we establish our sense of identity. And our identity begins on the Coast Salish roots. And I think it's very appropriate that we acknowledge that. And it's also worth pointing out that Washington State doesn't actually recognize Columbus Day. So we're just establishing our own traditions here in this town.
Thank you, Michael. Very well said. Anyone else? Jean?
Yes, this is a very easy vote. You know, a lot of the times when we, somebody brings something up and then emails start coming in, well, I can tell you, they came in with so much heartfelt thinking and writing on supporting this day as I've ever seen. And growing up here, we've, we've had, my family's had a ton of connections with the tribal members out there. We'd go out there all the time. We had, we were always invited to the festivities out there. They've always made us feel at home. And I am very proud to be sitting here tonight to be able to support this also.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. I am going to acknowledge that Jack Weiss was also sharing and bringing this forward with Terry and Roxanne. He couldn't be here this evening, but we should acknowledge that Jack helped make that happen. And seeing as it's a short resolution, I'm going to read the resolution and then call for a vote. Coast Salish Day, whereas the second Monday in October currently serves as Columbus Day in the United States, whereas Washington State does not celebrate Columbus Day. Whereas research has shown that Coast Salish tribes, including the Nukusak Indian Tribe and the Lummi Nation, have lived, worked, and played in Bellingham since time immemorial. Whereas the era of colonization and the genocidal actions of Christopher Columbus have led to historical trauma within various cultures and people, namely Coast Salish populations. Whereas the City of Bellingham has an opportunity to celebrate the Coast Salish people who predated Christopher Columbus. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bellingham that the City of Bellingham will recognize this holiday as Coast Salish Day. Be it further resolved that the City of Bellingham will honor every second Monday in October as Coast Salish Day. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 6-0 with Jack Weiss excused. And so that makes it unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Yes.
That was the end of our public comment period as well. So we're going to move into our public hearings. I'll give folks a minute here, I guess. If you aren't here for a public hearing and want to move on, now is a good time. If you would like to stay, I'm sure it will be scintillating. Not you, Jean.
Why don't we take about a three-minute break?
Yeah, I think we'll take a three-minute break. Okay, we're going to reconvene this meeting of the Bellingham City Council. We've lost Jean, but it's not the first time. Sure, he'll be back. Jean is coming. We're going to move into our two public hearings of the evening. This first one is to consider a request to add a comprehensive plan amendment to the docket for review in 2014 and 2015. Should I read through the introductory statement here and then turn it over? Why don't you guys introduce it then? And is that back door open? It's fairly noisy still. There he is. I knew it couldn't take that long. Okay. Let's get this show on the road.
Lisa Poole, the Planning Department. This is a consideration of a request to docket amendments to the Samish neighborhood plan. I think so, yes. I'm just not close enough. I apologize. This is to docket amendments to the Samish neighborhood and to the Bellingham Municipal Code to rezone property at 801 Samish Way from residential single to commercial planned with a non-retail restriction. And I do have a presentation for you.
Okay. Brief, very brief, yes. Been here long enough to know.
All right. So I just wanted to refresh your memory about the docket process. It is a two-step process. The first step is to establish the docket, which is the annual list of comprehensive plan amendments. Once that happens, step two is to analyze the actual comprehensive plan and rezone proposals through a separate legislative process, which includes public hearings before the Planning Commission and the City Council. Just wanted to highlight that there is specific review criteria related to the docket. All of the applications must meet criterion A, as well as one or more of the criteria under B. I won't go through those individually. They are in the staff report. So this specific proposal, as I stated before, is for 801 Samish Way. The request is to docket amendments to the Samish Neighborhood Plan Area 4 to rezone approximately 1.75 acres from residential single to commercial planned with a non-retail restriction. And that means that no retail uses would be allowed on the site. And it was submitted by Pacific Harbor Holdings on behalf of the property owner with their consent. The rezone is intended to facilitate the relocation of a psychology, psychology practice to the site. And the site currently includes a church that is permitted with a conditional use permit. I did want to note that during the July 21 City Council public hearing on two other docket requests, the applicant requested to add the amendments to the docket. Council directed the applicants to submit a formal application and go through the docket process that the other applicants did. And they did submit their application in August. The applicants also held a required neighborhood meeting on September 11. Several of the neighbor, neighbors attended that meeting. And the comments ranged from support to opposition, but primarily folks are in support of the psychology practice. They're concerned about the commercial uses on the site. Staff does find that the proposal meets several of the docketing criteria, including the availability of city resources to review the proposal. And it serves the public interest to provide the opportunity to evaluate whether the existing zoning is still appropriate for the site. So staff recommends approval and the Planning Commission recommended approval on September 18. The applicants are here with a brief presentation as well. So I'll go ahead and get that pulled up for them. Did you have any questions for me now? Or do you want to wait until after their presentation?
I think we can wait.
Wait, okay.
And see.
Good evening. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. This is a little distracting, but I'm going to do my best. It's a very, very beautiful celebration that we're witnessing. I'm Kate Haskell, and I'm a licensed mental health counselor. And I'm one of the applicants for 801 Samish Way. And I'm speaking on behalf of Pacific Harbor Holdings and Pacific Harbor Psychology. Three of us are going to speak briefly tonight. I promise it'll be brief because we've had the opportunity to present to you before. Rodney Anderson's going to do a quick PowerPoint about what we've done. And then Attorney Simi Jane will follow up with anything else that I've forgotten. Sorry, I lost my place. Most importantly, I first want to express my thanks to the council, to our mayor, and to the city planning office. They've been remarkable to work with. And fundamentally, I want to say thank you to the neighbors. A lot of the folks in this room and I and my colleagues have met more than four times now. And we appreciate the opportunity that you extended to us on August 4 to participate in the pre-docketing process. And I, as I reflect on those events of the last two months, there's one element at Pacific Harbor that we feel particularly grateful for, which is our relationships and dialogue with the neighbors. Holding meetings, both formal and informal, has allowed time for the public process and has given us an opportunity to build good relationships with the neighbors. We've been honored by the attendance of the neighbors at our meetings. The smallest meeting we had, there were six people who've been at several of the other meetings. As I look around the room tonight, I see people who I've grown to respect and who I look forward to working with. It has been impressive to see their commitment to their neighborhood and the greater community and how they give their time and energy to be thoughtful about what's happening in their community. To be clear, some of the neighbors have expressed concerns about the permanence of zoning and would like to mitigate risks. But overall, we've witnessed a desire to collaborate and work towards an agreement that's mutually beneficial. Many of the neighbors have reported that this proposal presents an opportunity to preserve their neighborhood character and shields them from the uncertainties related to the property being purchased by a developer or an out-of-town buyer. We have known since first discovering the property at 801 Samish that that was a good fit for our practice. But it has been a pleasure to discover that we would be surrounded by kind, thoughtful people who we'd love to be at their neighbor. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rodney Anderson. I've spoken to you guys before a couple of months ago. And I'm not a part of Pacific Harbor Psychology, but I'm speaking on their behalf tonight. As I stated last time, I'm a family physician here in Bellingham. I'm just going to zoom through this proposal in the interest of brevity. So a couple of months ago, when this proposal was first brought, there was discussion amongst the councilists whether or not this proposal should go through the formal docketing process. the councilists whether or not this proposal should go through the formal docketing process or just be docketed on the spot. And at that time, Mr. Lillquist, you made a statement that I want to circle back around to that I think has come to the fore for this group as they've worked through it over the last couple of months, and that through process, and specifically through the pre-docketing process, we respect the rights of others. And I think the process that we've gone through over the last couple of months has given everybody a voice. The city staff has been given a chance to review and make a recommendation, the Planning Commission as well, and perhaps most importantly, the neighbors. We've respected their right to hear the proposal, respected their right to ask questions, and respected the right to express their opinion. So at this point, we've gone through all the process, and here we are tonight to vote on the docketing. Lisa explained the recommendation from the city staff and the Planning Commission, and this again rephrases the docketing criteria, that portion A was met, and then within portion B, four out of the five criteria they felt were met. And as we've pored over this over the last couple of months, the one that has recurrently come to the fore for us is number two, that the proposal demonstrates strong potential to serve the public interest by implementing specifically identified goals and policies from the comprehensive plan. And I think first is just the words "public interest." I mean, all of us who are in healthcare feel like we are participating daily in a public service. I've had the privilege, if you call it that, of reading every last word of the comprehensive plan.
Not a privilege.
No.
Not a privilege, as Jean says. Spent more than one night poring over that document. And there are some specific goals that are outlined in that document that I just wanted to call to the fore. Lisa and the city staff outlined some of these in the packet that you have tonight. But the one that they didn't mention that I think is very relevant and personal for me is this idea of access to quality healthcare. And it's stated very clearly, actually in the first chapter of the comprehensive plan, that all citizens within Bellingham ought to have access to quality healthcare. And further, it's mentioned that healthcare is one of nine "desirable" employment sectors that the city ought to strive to keep within its boundaries. They also talked about supporting small business. There's some in there about economic vitality and then preserving neighborhood character. And within maintaining economic vitality, there's a specific statement around these nine desirable sectors for Bellingham, that we need to ensure that there are suitable locations within the city for these sectors. And when I spoke before the Planning Commission, I went through sort of what a suitable sector looks like for a psychology practice, because I think it has some unique needs around parking and proximity and access and such. I won't bore you with those details tonight, but suffice to say, this property, 801 Samish Way, meets that criteria. I want to speak for a moment just about working with the neighbors, and I think that wording was chosen intentionally, because this process over the last few months has evolved to a very collaborative process with the neighbors. And I think Lisa expressed her sense of what came out of the formal neighborhood meeting, but there's been several other small meetings and individual conversations. And I would agree that there's been almost universal support for the psychology practice, for the work they do, for the need that exists within the community. I think there's been general agreement that the immediate proposed use, that is, the psychology practice, would be a good fit for the neighborhood, along with the intentions not to change the external appearance of the building nor the landscaping to any substantial degree. But the recurrent concern that has arisen is a desire to protect the neighborhood over the long term by adopting zoning to minimize risk of undesirable change. And the group, Pacific Harbor Psychology, has taken some very specific steps to ensure the long-term stability of the group, and specifically, the long-term stability in that location and how they've designed their LLC and their ownership group. If you are interested, I'm happy to explain some of those details, but it's probably beyond the scope of the conversation tonight. And while they feel like they are around for the long haul, and that may be 30 years or 50 years, we are in complete agreement that nothing lasts forever, although I've been told recurrently that zoning lasts forever. And so, as we've thought through this process, I think the group is in complete agreement that finding zoning that is suitable for the short-term needs of the group but does not expose the neighbors to long-term risk is of the utmost importance. And I just want to state that the practice is in complete agreement with that. And Mr. Lillquist, I'm gonna circle back around to you again, but at the last meeting, he made a statement that he would be in support of zoning that's not too broad and not too narrow. And not too broad is to expose the neighbors to undue risk down the road, but my understanding is also not too narrow. I think Jack Weiss made the comment, there are 350 zoning designations. We don't know to add another one. So as the proposal stands currently, it is for commercial, non-retail, but my understanding is the process over the next calendar year will be to work through that and refine that to specifically meet the needs of the group. And I just want to communicate that the practice is very much in support of finding a mutually beneficial solution. So in summary, we appreciate the opportunity to go through the process over the last two months. I think there's a lot of good that has come from going through this docketing process and building these relationships and educating ourselves. I think we've laid the groundwork of open communication and mutual respect with the impacted parties. And then finally, we're confident that moving forward, we can work collaboratively with the city and the neighbors to find a mutually beneficial outcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael, folks are paying attention.
I'm amazed they do listen to Jack and Michael. I'm just kind of excited.
Hey, hey.
Hi, Simi Jane with Senator Thurston. P.S., I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant tonight. You heard from me a couple of months ago, and I'm really happy to see how staff responded quickly to get this back before you tonight. As you know, I emphasize at that time that the council does have the authority to docket requests at any time if it meets the docketing criteria, and this is a really special opportunity, as you have heard tonight, to facilitate a move for this business. And there'll be a lot of public comment and process still to go through before the amendment can be finalized. And as you heard from the clients, they look forward to working with the neighbors to focus on solutions that might mitigate any unintended effects from this rezone. But I urge you to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission and docket their request. And if you have any legal questions, I'm happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Simi. We have two folks signed up for the public hearing. Is there any questions from council members before we open the public hearing? Are there any questions? Excuse me. Seen none. Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. We've got Dick Conneboy and Ken Choville signed up, if you want to come up and speak.
Good evening again. I'm still Dick Conneboy. I lived and worked in Washington, D.C. for about 20 years in the federal government, and I harbor few illusions as a result of my employment there. And tonight, I harbor a few illusions that this will be docketed, mainly because the bar for docketing items to this process is so low that just about anything can cross it. That being said, I'd like to focus a little bit more on what might be the unintended consequences of eventually approving this, and maybe you can retain this when the actual hearing comes up next year. But I'll remind you about it when that comes up, too. What I see happening here, because there's also a lot across the street, or several parcels across the street, that are going for a rezone from commercial, non-retail to commercial retail. So that, and I think the developers have admitted that they want to put up an apartment complex there with stores underneath or whatever. Now, so if this were to go through, think five, 10 years down the road, what's going to be happening there? There's going to be pressure on the surrounding parcels, namely the Community Baptist Church to the south of the parcel across the street from 801 Samish, and the Elks Lodge. The Community Baptist Church has a huge parcel there. I'm not sure how many acres, but it's really large. And the value of that as another commercial property, one that might be rezoned, might cause people to come forward, might cause the church to come forward, to get their money out of it. Similarly, the Elks Lodge, I don't know what the population of that membership is right now, but I don't see that as a growing enterprise. And I would similarly think that the pressures to change that zoning where the Elks Lodge is right now to commercial would also be there, because somebody might want to put down a nice price for it. So what you've ended up with, maybe five, 10 years down the future, is an area not what the psychology practices envisioned, this tree-lined, quiet residential area, but one that's been turned into a mini-commercial area at that end of Samish. And don't forget, on the other side of this property, the church property that they want to rezone, is an area zoned multifamily. So the entire complexion of that end of Samish Way can be changed, and I think that's what you need to look out for down the road, regardless of what the promises are of this group, whose motives are great. I understand that. But I think we have to take a look at the entire picture. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. Ken? And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this item, feel free to come forward at this time.
Good evening, council. I'm Ken Choville, 816 36th Street. It's kind of heartwarming, actually, to watch small D democracy at work tonight. And I think in that same spirit, small D democracy really requires that we move ahead with this docketing process for this project. If you were to look straight through the picture behind you, the kind of the parking area there is my house. My wife Lisa and I have lived there for a number of years, and you should have in your packet somewhere a letter signed by the two of us and eight or so of the contiguous neighbors that border that property or close to it on 36th Street. Small D democracy, to me, means thinking on your feed and making adjustments as needed based on the public interest. It's because of that that I'm a little less cynical about what city government is capable of than the previous speaker. We're very interested in preserving the quality of this neighborhood. And for these reasons, and all the ones mentioned before, I urge you to go ahead and docket this request and allow the process to work. Allow the process to further the conversation around what this property is to become. It's good for the community. It's good for the neighborhood. And I encourage you to take a look at these projects. There's a lot of change being proposed in our neighborhood. You mentioned the Elks Club and the property near there. But if you look at these projects one at a time, as I think you'll be doing in the future, you'll be finding that this is a unique piece of property for a very unique purpose, one that could not have been conceived when this comp plan was written and passed and when the zoning was done. It's a unique opportunity to preserve a business, to preserve the neighborhood character, and we think it is in the best interest of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Marion, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Still Marion Bedill. I do not have a specific position either in favor or opposed to this particular project. However, I'd like to comment, since my first three years living in Bellingham was just about across the street from this, at 1004 Samish Way, so I kind of know the lay of the land, how it was 20 some odd years ago. My principal comment on this, and enhanced with the discussion of new additional developments that might happen nearby, is traffic and traffic safety. That stretch of Samish runs for quite a ways, fairly straight, a little curve to it, but it's subject to high-speed traffic. And high-intensity inner-exit traffic on the side lots is an element that would concern me as a former director of a public works department myself. That's something that you definitely should direct the city to study carefully and perhaps take some specific actions to give a safer traffic situation there. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Ron Judd, I live at 817 Samish Way, which is two driveways down from 801 Samish. I share a driveway with three other residences. I had to say something just to echo what Dick Conneboy said, but I also wanted to talk really briefly about this process. I want to thank the council, by the way, for backing up and putting this proposal through the full public process. I think you can see that that yielded some good benefits. The process itself, though, I have to say, as a citizen who's just educated myself on the docket process, is really bizarre. I mean, I've seen people who are my neighbors who've gotten involved in this, and they're like, this is our chance to come out and speak about this project. And they're basically scolded when they come through the door. Can't discuss the merits. Don't talk about the merits. You're supposed to just sit there and think generalities, single-family, commercial plan, where on the other side, there's a group of proponents for a project that sounds good in many ways, with their attorneys and their staff, and it's all about the merits. The reason it's being docketed is the merits. Save a business. Save a practice, which I don't really agree with, by the way. I think you're moving a practice. We're not bringing in a big new sector of employment here or something. We're moving a business from one side of town to the other. That's the whole plan. And the question is, how does it affect us as the neighbors? So I just think the process is weird. It needs to be looked at, because I think Councilman Knutson said it correctly at the previous meeting, you can docket a ham sandwich in Bellingham. And I appreciate public process and public input, but I would love to see some proposal just for humor that came before this council that didn't get docketed. I imagine there must be some, right? Anyway, that's what it is. As to the specifics, I think the previous speaker raised a really critical point. People who I know who live along Samish Way are really flipped out about the traffic. It's not safe. People drive 55 miles an hour down the road, coming downhill routinely. I take my life in my hands to cross the street to get my mail. And when the speaker came up here tonight, I hit home about the guy that got struck on Alabama Street. I'm waiting for that to happen on Samish Way. I don't see cops there enforcing the speed limit. I don't see a sign that says, "You're going 86." You know, it just goes. So traffic is a big concern, and that's my big concern, frankly, about this. And the neighbors who are concerned, and there are a lot of us who are concerned, there hasn't been a big kumbaya circle exactly, we're concerned about that and the domino effect of the other properties in that cluster. And the neighbors who I have heard talk, who are in favor of it, and I would be, too, if I lived where they are, they're behind it. They don't deal with that traffic issue, and I think they might have a slightly different view of it if they lived on Samish Way. They live in Ridgemont, which is a nice place to live, so I get their viewpoint. But that's a concern that everybody has, and I know I'm not supposed to talk about the merits, so, given that, I will save the rest of my breath for six months or a year down the road. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seen none. Okay, seen none. We're gonna close the public hearing at this time. What is the will of the council? Michael?
I have a question first. Maybe we could throw up the map, maybe not. There were several docketing requests made adjacent and across the street from this. My question is, how will those, I think it's three proposals, be evaluated? How related will their reviews be? How cumulative will the assessment be?
Yeah, there was just one other request.
One, okay.
Across the street.
I guess I was confused.
There's one up on Ashley Street as well, but that's a little ways.
Oh, it's further away. Okay, so there's one directly across the street.
There's just one, right? And so that's already gone through the docket process?
Right, but I'm talking about the evaluation. Assuming it's docketed, how will the actual evaluation go forward? And the reason why I ask is, it makes me leery to do small requests, because then it's hard for me to consider those to be appropriate to the general benefit, so...
They're being looked at separately. The one across the street, the rezone and comprehensive plan amendment applications have already come in, so we're reviewing those right now, and they'll actually go to Planning Commission next month. And so, I mean, we're looking at them separately.
That strikes me as a mistake to not take into consideration possible zoning changes across the street that we know about, so...
Do you, perhaps, Michael, want to phrase that as a request?
I think I asked how they'd be reviewed, and I heard it was separate.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Oh, Kelly?
But since I can sense a question in almost any comment, I would say that I think what I hear Michael asking about is cumulative effect. So, even though we look at them separately, I think that we could make some kind of a statement or present some kind of an information on cumulative effect, and I'd already written that down when the other properties came up, so...
Okay.
I think we'd even go further, and even though the planning commission has one already on their calendar, but when we bring them to you folks, we could probably bring them together, because the same people are going to be interested in both, right? So, it makes sense to process them here, at least, together.
That sounds good to me. Okay, thanks, Greg. Jean?
I move we docket this proposal.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think Roxanne beat you, Pinky.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Terry?
Just want to emphasize that this is just the docketing process, and as you know, just because it's docketed doesn't mean it's a done deal, because we've set up things previous on, where we've docketed with the understanding that if we can't come to some good agreement on how this is going to be, it's going to be turned down. And that's what this process is, is just the docket, and then we will look at it after the other word's been done. So, with that, I will support it.
Thanks, Terry. Okay, any other comments before we vote? Was that a yes, Roxanne? Oh, okay. All those in favor of adding this item to the comprehensive, adding this comprehensive plan amendment to the docket for review in 2014 and 2015, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, 6-0, with Jack Weiss absent. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to our next item. We have a second public hearing this evening, and resolution for the 2014 to 2019 Water Use Efficiency Program. We'll conduct a public hearing on the 2014 to 2019 Water Use Efficiency Program goals and adopt the goals by passing a resolution. And I believe we have a presentation from Planning Works, Public Works Director Ted Carlson. Planning Works, that could be a new department.
Yeah, we all work together, so...
Efficiencies, yeah.
Good evening, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. At your previous city council committee meeting, you received a committee briefing from public works staff on the water use efficiencies goals that are required as part of municipal water law. So, we went over the proposed goals for the next planning period, talked a little bit about how we fared in our previous period, gave some performance measures from that. Today, or at that time, council directed staff to come back and hold a public hearing on our proposed goals, so that's what we're doing here tonight. I'll turn it over to Anitra, she has a brief presentation, and then we would ask council to open it up to public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, council. Short and sweet, Anitra Acichero, Public Works, Natural Resources. So, I'm going to be giving you a brief outline, state requirements for the water use efficiency programs, a summary of our first program period from 2008 to 2013, data overview, and our proposed goals and measures for this next six-year period. So, these key requirements are really summed up in these three bullet points, planning, metering, and goal-setting, and performance reporting. So, the biggest one that impacts us the most is obviously the metering. We have roughly 26,000 water customers at present, and we still have about 11,000 un-metered residential customers that need to be metered. So, we're in the middle of that process right now. Once we are fully metered, then we will need to meet the state's distribution system leakage standard of 10% or less, but that will be after 2017. And that's the goal-setting, that's why we're here tonight, is to adopt two goals and 10 proposed resolutions through this public process. And then, the annual performance reporting is on consumption data and progress for meeting those goals and the measures through that six-year period. So, for the more formal update on the metering project, we have 4,000 newly metered customers that began meter billing in 2014, and their consumption to date for this first six months of analysis is about 62 gallons per capita per day. And then, we have another 4,000 that will be, have meters turned on in January of 2015. So, that will leave us with another 8,000 or so to get metered by 2017, which we are on track and on schedule for. Brief, quick summary on our goals and our measures, you guys have more detail in your agenda packets. We did achieve both goals that we had established for this previous six-year period. Our residential consumption, we had put it, keeping it an average of 105 gallons per capita, and we actually were around 76 gallons per capita per day for residential. And for non-residential, we had set it at 77, and we came in around 74 gallons. So, we did great on that. And then, our, keeping our citywide demand equal to or below population growth rate, our population growth rate for this six-year period is about 1.6%, and then our consumption, we actually had a reduction of about 3%. So, the trend has been on the downward. This is an overview of our consumption by customer class. So, for this first program period, we focused a lot of our measures and outreach on these top three customer classes as consumers. So, you can see the residential takes the biggest piece of the pie, and then the multi-unit, and then the commercial customers. So, we'll be continuing on that for this next program period, but it'll be modified Our measures, I'm not going to go through them all, just highlight some of the ones that we're looking at continuing that have been most effective. The toilet retrofits, that's really more morphed into more of a rebate program for high-efficiency toilets and clothes washers, and it was targeted most predominantly towards these three customer classes in this last period. And that resulted in substantial savings and a good, healthy number of applications from the public and community on those retrofits. And then, another thing that we did, have been doing ongoing, that's embedded in this number nine, we do leak detection programs where we survey 10 to 12 miles of main on our system out of our 400 miles of main every year, and that also results in substantial water savings, which we will be continuing. So, this is one of my favorite slides, because it shows consumption from the 90s up to 2013. And I want to point out that we have never been a fully metered water system, and so you can see, and we are still, we have not, this 2014 is when we turned on the new meters for those 4,000 customers. So, this does not depict any newly metered data.
Anitra, you might want to explain which line means what.
Okay, yep. So, the population is the brighter blue line, trending up, and then you can see the graph, the bars are the consumption, average daily demand, citywide, and then the 10 is denoting million gallons, or the red 10. So, and I'll point that out more, so, in the next couple of slides. But what we're seeing is another dip in consumption that we saw in the mid to late 90s. And even though right now, and our consumption's continuing, or I'm sorry, our population is continuing to go up, but our consumption is continuing to drop or level off. And this is a trend that's being seen nationally as well, and a lot of that is attributed to new, high-efficiency fixtures going into new developments. But I think for us locally, it's coupled with some of the fixture retrofits and just our community's ethos on conservation, really, because we've been, majority of our customers have been un-metered since we've had water practically. This one I just put in, I want to really illustrate the relationship between our treatment and delivery costs and our consumption and demand. So, as our demand increases, so do our costs in treatment and delivery. So, that's just pointing out another nugget, that when we conserve water, we also save these other energy costs and chemical costs for treating or drinking water. So, our proposed goals for this next six-year period is to really sustain that trend that we're seeing, that we've been in right now since 2008, and that is to keep our ADD down to below 10 million gallons per day during this next six-year period. And then, focusing on, we're not focusing, but calling attention to our peak day demand. So, historically, our peak day, which is, how do I, so, in a month, whatever the highest water consumption of that month, whatever day had the highest use, is the peak day demand. And so, June to August, we've always seen between 17 to 20 million gallons per day. Historically, it was being peak demand, but over the last several years, we have averaged at about 14 million gallons or below. So, and that, and actually, that started to change more in 2009. So, that's another positive thing we're seeing. And, I don't know how much time I have. For these measures to support those goals, we're going to continue the rebates for residential and commercial customers. We're going to, we'd like to extend rebates to multi-unit. We have done programs for them in the past, but refocus our efforts on that as well. Best management practices for irrigation, industrial, institutional. In the previous slide, their consumption as a customer class is quite small, but we do have significantly high users within those, or there's some uniformity, like for, say, in the institutional customer class, there's some uniformity in the types of uses. So, we'd like to assist these other areas of our sector that we haven't really been focusing on, haven't really focused on. Seven, continue partnerships that we've had. So, we've been working with Opportunity Council and Sustainable Connections on the Community Energy Challenge, trying to bridge the water-energy nexus, Wazoo-Watcom County Extension to do outdoor irrigation efficiency education, and resources to do elementary school education for water use efficiency. Another measure, cost-benefit analysis, to really look more closely as we become a fully metered water system, where our best efforts and investments pay off in terms of, do we focus more on the high users? Do we focus more on the customer class, or do we do a combination of both? And the ninth one, implementation, or when the DAF dissolved air filtration system goes in, that'll assist in reduced consumption and operations at the water treatment plant. And then, number 10, continue our sustainable water management demonstration projects with our community partners, and that's really focused on outdoor water efficiency. So, these measures and goals, proposed measures and goals for this next six-year period really support the state's whole mission and real reason for creating the water use efficiency goal. And then, for us, it enables us to really, once we become a fully metered system, to really have a complete data set to work with, to really start to see where we want to focus efforts going forward. And that's it. Sorry, I talked so fast.
Thank you, Anitra, that was great. Any questions for staff? Michael?
Last time this came up, I asked about purple pipe systems. These are systems of non-potable water that can still be used for purposes. I think the answer, and please let me know if it's true, that the staff didn't feel there's a need to add that in particular, to call that out, that he felt it was included in one of these measures, measure eight, perhaps?
And 10.
10.
And really, so, the sustainable water management and it's, these systems can be, the intent is to put it in 10, to continue to do more demonstration projects, going out for potential grants, where people can see them more in the public. We already have a system in place within the planning department for, and code and for the rainwater harvesting and whatnot. So, didn't call attention to it specifically, because try to embed it in all the work that we're doing with, from toilet recycling for the rebate projects. I mean, that's not purple pipe or anything, but it's kind of working with the sustainable side of water management and all aspects and conservation. So, no, it's not specific in the measures. It's embedded.
Pinky?
Anitra, good question. Are all our commercial buildings metered?
Yes. The only un-metered accounts that we have are all residential, single-family residential.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone, anything else from staff? Nope.
No, nobody signed up.
It looks like there's no one signed up, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on these items before us, the proposed Water Use Efficiency Program and goals? Seeing none, okay. We're going to close the public hearing. Turn it over. What is the will of the council?
Move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roxanne?
Just a joke. So, are you saying I shouldn't feel as guilty about watering my gardens?
Well, not if you're using rainwater, don't feel guilty.
Okay, all those, oh, I'm sorry, Pinky?
Since we have a moment, I'm just wondering if I could ask Anitra to share with the public some of the rebates that are actually available from the city?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't, so, we have up to $100, that was, thank you, we have up to $100 available for replacement of a high-water-using fixture, which would be 3.5 gallon-per-flesh toilets or more, or top-loading clothes washers.
Got to hope my wife isn't watching.
And the reason being for those, because those are the two largest water-using fixtures in the home, so that's obviously why we focus on that.
Thank you, Anitra.
Yeah, thanks, Pinky.
Enjoy shopping for appliances this weekend, Jean.
We just got one.
Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, adopting the 2014 to 2019 Water Use Efficiency Goals and Performance Measures, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, 6-0, with Jack Weiss absent. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on, we'll go into committee reports. This afternoon, we had a couple of committees. First up was Public Works, Public Safety, with Terry Bornham, and Chair.
Thank you, Kathy. We had four items before our committee today. The first was an update on the EMS system and contract for advanced life support, the ALS system. Beginning January 1, 2014, the Bellingham Fire Department became one of two agencies providing ALS services in Watcom County, under contract with the county. A transition period occurred between January and June, where the city continued to provide services with four ALS units. As of July 1, the city now provides services through three ALS units, with Fire District 7 operating a single ALS unit, for a total of four units throughout the county. Fire staff provided an update on ALS services occurring since July 1, 2014. And it was an interesting report. One of the, one of the things I found most interesting, because I heard this at the EMS Oversight Board, and asked the chief to give us an update on that, is the number of times where we've already hit all four units being out, plus the chase car being out at the same time. And there were actually 41 different, separate times when all of the units have been out at the same time. 20 of them was when all four units were out, and then another call came in, and there was no units to go out, other than the chase car, which went out. So, basically, we're, at times, hitting full capacity of what we have. We have not hit any incidences where we have not been able to cover calls, which is a really good thing, but it does put us, the system, kind of on, for me, it sends up a few red flags to be, for us to be watching. You know, are we hitting capacity already with our system as we've, you know, cut back? I know there's, there's ways to streamline, and hopefully, you know, we'll get more efficiencies out of the system, but it's something for us as council members to keep a look at, look out on this as we go forward. But it was a good report, and it was for information only.
Thank you.
The second report was a, also by Chief The second report was a, also by Chief Newbold, was, uh, the Community Paramedic Pilot Program, or I should say, uh, Chief Newbold and Captain Sean, uh, Far- Farnard?
Farnard.
Yeah, yeah. The Fire Department will conduct a nine-month pilot program beginning October first, two thousand fourteen, to provide community paramedic service. Forty years after the emergency medical services, or EMS system, was developed to manage trauma and, uh, ca- cardiac arrest, use of EMS via nine-one-one is dominated by calls to non-emergent situations. Over the last three years, only two percent of the Bellingham Fire District's approximately twelve thousand annual EMS calls have been transported in immediate life-threatening conditions. In the same period, thirty-five percent of our EMS responses have resulted in no ambulance transport. Bellingham, the Fire, uh, Bellingham Fire Department's Community Paramedic Project will establish a sustainable model for improving the use of existing EMS resources, uh, through the scope of practice, practice flexibility, and coordination with other community resources, public safety, and partnering with, um, health providers. I find this to be a really exciting pod, uh, pilot project, because it's looking at, as we've just talked about in the previous, as we're meeting capacity, it's a, a way of attempting to deal with some of the problems where we're getting EMS calls, that we really don't need that level of service. And if we, uh, if Waha is able to move forward with their, um, uh, uh, intensive case management services, would dovetail with, with that, to be able to deal with some of the biggest call volumes, or, and specific people who have a lot of different problems, but don't need transport. And so, I really look forward to seeing this program coming back with the results of the, the pilot study, because this is, you know, it's good to see this kind of, uh, upfront kind of work, proactive kind of work, so that we can, you know, maybe put money in the front end to save a whole lot on, on those backend costs. Uh, so this was for information only, as well. The next item we had was the proposed ordinance amending Title XI of the Bellingham Municipal Code relating to parking. Oh, with this one, we, uh, we have asked, okay, well, the City of Bellingham Transportation Commission and staff have developed a number of proposed amendments to Title XI of the Bellingham Municipal Code related to parking. Policy-based, uh, basis for proposed changes is contained in the two thousand seven comprehensive plan and the two thousand fourteen downtown Bellingham plan. The proposed changes are intended to further the city's effort to encourage transportation mode shift towards alternative, uh, modes by allowing for seventy-two hours on-the-street parking. Administrative function of the parking operation staffs are clarified by allowing for parking time limits to be established. An increase in fines is proposed to encourage use of off-street parking and payment at meters. Uh, the attached staff reports details the changes and reasoning behind the proposal. We had continued this over to today for a work session to get, uh, at my request, wanting more financial information on the justification for doubling downtown parking, uh, and how, how those costs are used by the municipal court. Fortunately, we weren't able to get that information prior to our meeting. We got some today, and some other will be coming, so we've set this over for another work session when we will get that information, and we can make decisions and recommendations with the full information that we need. So today, we moved to set this over for another work session, so no action was taken on the other items. So the last item we dealt with was the Bicycle Master Plan. The two thousand fourteen City of Bellingham Bicycle Master Plan, the BMP, is a result of over one year of citizen steering committee consultant and staff input, and established a recommend, recommended bicycle network that the city will strive to implement in the future. The BMP includes strategies for funding and implementation moving forward. The BMP is available on the city's website, and is summarized in the proposed resolution attached here, too, in response to the council's input at the September twenty-second, two thousand fourteen work session. Staff recommends revising the BMP language, as shown in the attached memo. Today, we approved a couple of amendments, and, and, uh, recommended approval of the master plan with, with a couple amendments. There was one amendment that is, uh, mixed recommendations that comes with also a staff recommendation, so.
Right, so Ted Carlson, Public Works Department, thank you, that was a very good summary. Uh, I handed out to the council before the meeting tonight, some proposed language that came out of our morning committee work session, as Councilmember Bornham indicated. I think, uh, if the council's okay with it, I could read the first, uh, the first portion of this amended language, and what we're doing is working off of both, uh, the, the memo that's in your packet, as amended, and the language that's proposed here tonight. So, um, where I think there was full agreement at the committee level, uh, and, and, just quickly, this language at the top of the paper I handed out that says amended resolution would replace the therefore language in the resolution that's in your packet, all the whereas language would remain the same, and this would just amend the therefore, uh, portion of the resolution. It states, "The two thousand fourteen Bicycle Master Plan summarized in Exhibit A here, to and set forth in full on the city's website at www.cob.org backslash service, backslash planning, backslash transportation."
Oh, I'm gone already.
Well, uh, and I, you know, I did check, this does need to be read into the record. Backslash transportation, backslash bike master planning, as amended by the staff memorandum dated October seventh, two thousand fourteen, and as further amended by council action at its regular meeting on October thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, is hereby approved as a working plan for bicycle improvement throughout Bellingham. And the amendments that happened today, uh, were, uh, to clarify what was handed out in the memo, so that the memo was adopted by the committee, or approved by the committee. Um, so that, I think we were in full agreement, or I should say, the committee was in full agreement. And then, um, the items below were discussed during the committee with, I believe, mixed recommendation, and those would need to be addressed further by the council tonight.
Okay. Ted, with the, with the one, the ones that you put, the motions that are on the sheet?
Yes.
I believe there, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I thought there was a, a third one on the memo sheet, um, uh, at the top, uh, staff had recommended a change relating to, I think it was Michael's, on five point three point two, and the change accommodate bicyclists primarily on the lower volume, lower emission streets, was that?
That's correct, and that would be incorporated in this first paragraph by saying that it is amended, uh, both by the staff memo, and by what was discussed today. But if, if you would like, since the full council may not have gone over those, I'd be happy to go through what we amended in that staff memo. It's a council's pleasure.
Does, does council, do we need that, or are we okay with?
I'm kind of seeing we don't need it. Is that okay?
But all those, all of the items that staff recommended in the memo are incorporated with that language that I read.
Okay, and so then we have two other motions that were, um, uh, that had mixed, uh, recommendations.
And Terry, I believe in, in conversations with, with Peter and his staff, the recommendation would be to take the first one, vote on that, and then see if there was a motion for the following ones to amend further.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Peter?
Just to clarify, um, I think the best thing would be to move, make the motion on the resolution as amended, as Ted just articulated, then you would have, that would be the main motion.
Okay.
And then you would have potential motions for amendment after that, and then when you're done, you'll, you'll ultimately vote on the main motion.
Thank you, Peter.
So then, I would move that we, uh, I would move that we pass, uh, the resolution as amended, and is ready.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Michael?
I will support that main motion, but I currently move to amend Action one point three-two on page twenty of the plan as follows, and that is basically substituting language as shown here in the memo, to say that Action Plan one point three point two, to install high-quality bicycle facilities that provide greater separation from motor vehicle traffic, and here's a change, now says, "Whenever feasible," as opposed to saying where appropriate and feasible. That was one of the things that came forward, the mixed recommendation, uh, this morning. The reason why I make this, uh, motion is to establish unambiguously that this is a preference, but whenever it's feasible, not whenever it's not feasible.
Okay.
The discussion had to do a lot with the fact that, at the time, something is put in, an engineering decision will be made, but right now, there's no clear policy preference indicating that protected bike lanes, which are safer than unprotected bike lanes, are policy preference. This is a way of adding a policy preference that still admits to the reality that it can't always be done, and it won't be done when, and that's not feasible.
Sure. Okay, um, Michael has made an amending motion, is there?
I'll second it.
Second, here, seeing the second. Any discussion? Pinky?
I guess I'm not clear what the difference is.
Just the strength of the language. Uh, the one says where appropriate and feasible, doesn't strike me as indicating any kind of preference.
Okay. Ted, did you have something to add?
Just to indicate that staff was supportive of this language of council's.
Okay. Anyone else have the, I'll just say, if it makes you happy, Mike, no, just kidding. I can see where you're coming from, and I'm all for being more clear, and, uh, it doesn't make staff's job more difficult, so I'll be supporting it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? No? Okay, uh, all those in favor of Michael's amendment to the main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, uh, six-zero with Jack Weiss absent. Michael?
I now move to further amend the main motion one more time. This has to do, again, with language already in the staff memo. On page eighty-four in Chapter Six, under Implementation Strategies, the new sentence added by the staff says, "The following strategies reflect the community's desire to complete the recommended bicycle network as rapidly as possible, with a goal of completion in less than twenty years." Um, I have been, uh, sent a memo around, have been arguing repeatedly that fifteen years is a reasonable and feasible goal. Rather than push that, I'm gonna, I, I, I'm going to accept a compromise, which is, the memo is already stripped all the precise, precise date ranges out of the plan, remove those commitments to specific dates that staff was uncomfortable with, um, but I still would like to, uh, keep the goal of fifteen years in there some way, and so I would substitute the goal of completion in fifteen to twenty years as the new goal. And that, it really, in the entire document, is the only time a timeframe is specified, and I think it's important that we indicate with numbers, um, the possibility of achieving this faster than twenty years. I think the important thing that I would like to say with regard to this amendment is that this is the council's document, our plan, this is something that we need to hold ourselves to in budgeting coming forward in the future years, using the dedicated funding streams we have. This is not the staff's work plan. If we don't achieve this goal, it really is something the city council and higher levels have not provided the funding and the means to achieve. So, um, I think this is something that we, the city council, just say we want to promise to our community. This is not a work plan that I'm gonna hold the staff to.
Second.
Nicely said. Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Terry, and then Pinky?
Yeah, this is one I'm not going to, I'm not going to, uh, support, uh, with it. I would like to see if we can get it done, and I think the, the substitute language that the staff had recommended states that, that we can try to get this done as soon as possible without putting in other dates, uh, with it, and I think it, it gets us there without, you know, putting up something that we might not be able to do, that's going to be held up, and said, "You said fifty, you're gonna do it in fifteen," and, well, staff is saying they think with the time, staff, and money, we can get it done in twenty, and hopefully, if things, if things, the economy continues to improve, we can get it done quicker, and then we get it done quicker without, uh, putting those times in. So I'll agree with the staff's recommendation on this one.
Pinky? I would love to see this be done in fifteen years. I just don't wanna set the staff up for something that they cannot achieve, so I'm concerned. Um, Ted, could you tell me where the staff stands on the change from fifteen to twenty years?
Sure. The, the proposed language in the, in this, um, that's bold in this last section, is what staff came forward with, uh, in response to Councilmember Liliquis' initial memo, uh, where he was, uh, saying, "Let's move it forward and, and be more aggressive and shoot for fifteen years." That was our proposed language. We felt like tw- twenty years is, is what we believe is more reasonable to get it done, but we felt like it is a good goal to do it as quickly as possible, and we came up with the language of, uh, completing the network as rapidly as possible with a goal of twenty years. So that is staff's preference. Uh, we had a good discussion, I think, this morning in the committee. Uh, it is ultimately gonna be up to the budget and the availability of funding, but the language we put forward was our recommendation.
Well, um, I'm gonna be supporting Michael's amendment, which is maybe gonna surprise Michael, but, uh, it's a policy document, and fifteen to twenty years is still twenty years. So, if we get it done in nineteen years and three hundred and sixty-four days, we still hit the target, but putting a range in there that, um, calls attention to our distinct desire to do it sooner, and sends a message to other councils in the future that we wanted to do it sooner, can't hurt, so I'll be supporting. Anyone else like to speak to the motion? Michael?
Pinky, this is to you. I don't remember the exact numbers now, unfortunately, but looking at just our transportation's benefit district funding, and the amount of money we have available, we can complete all of the, you know, cost estimated short-term projects in, you know, three years' worth of, of revenue. I mean, this, this, I think this really is doable. I think the numbers are there. I don't, I don't think it's, it's unrealistic, and again, I think there's enough room in here as policy language. So I understand your very least concern in setting unrealistic goals. I could go over with you maybe some other time. I think it is a realistic goal.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none. All those in favor of this second, uh, motion amending the main motion, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes four-two with Jack Weiss absent. Okay, and now we are back to the main motion, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion of the main motion? Roxanne?
I just wanted to briefly say, I have been waiting for this day. And I thank the committee for all their deliberations on it, and all the work that the staff has done, the consultants' work, everybody who provided input to this. I just wanna say that the Mount Baker Bicycle Club has done such tremendous things for me personally, and for everybody that's a member, in helping me accomplish something that I didn't know if I'd be able to do, and riding my bike one hundred miles in a day. And so, to me, my vote in support of this will be my big thank you to the cycling community here for everything that it does for our neighborhoods, our people, our kids, and all of our families.
Thanks, Roxanne. Anyone else? Michael?
It's a great plan.
It is a great plan. It's a great plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Jack Weiss absent.
Excellent. End of committee report.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, uh, is Lake Watcom Natural Resources Committee with Pinky Vargas, Chair. Okay, next up is Lake Wacom Natural Resources Committee with Pinky Vargas chair.
We had one item in front of us today, it was information only, and it was a report out of the last Lake Wacom Policy Group meeting. The Policy Group Committee is the Lake Wacom Water and Sewer District, Wacom County Council, Southern Valley Community Association, and representatives from the Bellingham City Council. We had a presentation on the Aquatic Invasive Species Annual Program. We had a review. The goal of the program is to review the activities and finances and identify any changes needed for 2015. Staff presented an overview of 2014 AIS activities, and the purpose of the program is to prevent the introduction of aquatic invasive species into Wacom County waters and to stop the spread and locally, of locally established invasive species into new waters. I won't go through all the details of the report, that is online, if you wanna go through it, but some things I did wanna highlight. The total number of inspections have more than doubled since 2013, rising from just over 3,000 to almost 8,000. And our total permits rose from 2,200 to 50, almost 5,200 this year. Just interesting, significant things that I thought was, people coming for inspections to enter Lake Wacom came from 290 different water bodies in 16 different states and provinces. So that's a lot of exposure to our community that we are trying to mitigate. And, you know, it is a threat because not very many places have a comprehensive inspection program. Another thing I wanted to note that was different for this year is we did launch a website that was funded by Wacom County. The URL, by the way, is wacomboatinspections.com. It has an AIS awareness course. It was launched this year, and anybody who took the course and passed got a $10 discount on their, on their certification. So for anybody who was getting a non-motorized certificate, they got that for free if they passed the course, and we think this is a great educational element to our program. We thought there was some concern at the beginning of the year, how people felt about, you know, asking the non-motorized boats to be, go through the certification program, and this went extremely well. We have incredible competition, we had incredible collaboration from the communities and from a lot of the associations to have all of their inspections done at one time, and everyone was very pleased with the results. Our total program expenditures were over $300,000, 315,679 to be exact, and the amount of revenue that was received from the certifications was $120,000, so that covers about 38% of our program costs. Some of the things we talked about for 2015 that we wanna keep in mind, couple little hiccups this year, and some things we wanna do improvement on, some is in more improved logistics at Lake Samish. We did do a lot more inspections at Lake Samish this year, and most of them were quite successful. And assessment of risk for the off-season periods when inspections are not available. Also, community-wide education to increase support for the program. In addition, the program will be advocating at the state level in 2015 for funding for an enhanced statewide AIS program that would support and enhance the effectiveness of local inspections. We are very lucky that we have this program, and we can be proactive in protecting our lake instead of being reactive. So I just wanna say thank you very much for all of those who instill this program and the great work that they're doing, and that would be end of my report.
Thank you, Pinky. Next up, did you have something to add, or anticipating? Next up, Parks and Recreation with Roxanne Murphy chair.
So the Parks and Recreation Committee had one single agenda item, and it was a report on potential surplus real property, and the committee unanimously recommended to ask staff to schedule a public hearing for consideration of an unneeded property at 46th and Byron. And this would just be to schedule a public hearing to gather more information from the community members, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, let's see, Kelly? Okay, Michael?
I just wanna say that I'll be supporting the motion for a hearing, but as expressed this afternoon, I think the property is evaluated narrowly by the Parks Department for parks purposes, and I think we should look at other aspects and other reasons why that property may wanna remain under public ownership.
Sure, thanks, Michael. Anyone else before Kelly? Go ahead, Pinky.
I just wanna say I think it's very prudent of us to look at properties that we're not using and take a look at whether we can find other ways to serve the properties that we already own by maybe bringing some more funds back into our offers.
Kelly?
Yes, and I guess I'd just say, this was the first property that got brought forward. I think a point was made about what are the other properties? I think that council, we have that list, and I think that it would be really good to present that to council instead of just doing it piece by piece, so I think that was a good suggestion. And also to make sure that we've looked at how we first purchased the property, what was the purpose, and those type of things, so you know that there was some due diligence done here, and we didn't just throw spaghetti on the wall. So, but you can't, then you could put it in context, and you could see what we're actually talking about.
Great, Terry?
Yeah, I'll support it going to a public hearing, but I do wish that it would've went by the Parks Board. I understand why Greenways, because it doesn't belong within Greenways, but with the Parks Board, I do think maybe, since it's part of that, that it should go before the Parks Board, at least for discussion, before coming to a public hearing and hearing what they have to say. They'd probably, they'll probably say the same thing, but it had, you know, that's what the board's kinda for. And so I think it should go before the board, before it comes to us.
And I appreciate that, and I think that's a good, I think that's a good suggestion. I think it's also good that the Parks Board sees all potential properties that we're, that we're looking at.
Yeah, I agree.
Anything further? So I'm sorry, Roxanne, did you make a motion? And there was a second? Jean, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
End of committee.
Thank you. Next up was Committee of the Whole. This afternoon, we had, I believe, four items. The first was a discussion of our upcoming joint legislative objectives or priorities between the city, the Port of Bellingham, and Wacom County, and we had a discussion with the mayor and her staff about those. I'm just gonna jump to this page and see if there's anything I wanted to highlight, if there's anything particularly new that we should mention. Well, it's kind of the usual suspects, but we do have a specific item on rail safety here for advocating for increased resources for first responders and emergency management efforts. We had a nice chat this afternoon about how clearly that's not our only concern around rail safety, but that is one that we very clearly share with Wacom County and the Port of Bellingham, and can get very specific on with our advocacy team in Olympia with pertinent legislation that's probably coming before representatives in this upcoming session. But there will be other priorities that we're also advocating for in terms of rail safety and in terms of other things for the city, which is why we also, this afternoon, after passing or approving these legislative objectives, we also added our own city objectives to a legislative agenda. And what does that mean exactly, do you think, Kelly? We'll come up with a list of items that are particularly pertinent to the city of Bellingham and communicate those to our team as well.
Right, and, and potentially, they're gonna be here to make a presentation, so there'd be an opportunity for us to share those with them, and we did this, we have done this in the previous years. So we coordinate with AWC, because sometimes the stuff that we're interested in is also on their agenda, and the port and the, and the county do that with their professional organizations too. And then also our lobbyists, obviously, when they're down, they're representing us, they, they can also lobby or do, give testimony or sign in on bills on behalf of the city, and not necessarily everyone, I mean, all three entities.
Anything else, anyone wants to add to that? No? Okay, moving on, we also, of course, discussed a resolution recognizing the second Monday in October as Coast Salish Day, which we unanimously approved this evening already. Then we had an information-only presentation from Wacom Mountain Biking Coalition regarding their contributions to the community and the economic impacts of mountain biking to the city of Bellingham, and I just thought I'd call out a couple of these tidbits that were really cool. So they did a Survey Monkey earlier this year, so of course, it's not statistically accurate in any sense probably to say it's science necessarily, but this is qualitative information that is very interesting nonetheless. There were almost 800 respondents, 31 and a half percent of respondents reside out of Bellingham or Wacom County, which means they're coming here to go mountain biking. These people are affluent by local standards, with 67% of them having an income over $70,000. Over half of them spend a minimum of $40 at breweries, restaurants, hotels, gas stations, bike shops, and supermarkets every visit. 72% of them visit Bellingham at least quarterly, and a quarter of all these folks come monthly to recreate on our trails, so there's a frequent use, frequent recurring use. 50% of all our racers are from outside of Wacom County, which sounds to me like we should grow our race, our races, more races. And trails are not seasonally dependent, so folks are coming year-round. There's a lot of good information in this presentation. I know there are a lot of avid mountain bikers out there and supporters of Galbraith Mountain and our extensive mountain biking trails in the city of Bellingham, so if you are interested in learning more about what we heard this afternoon, you can access the video online and see the presentation yourself. Terry, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just, I just think one of the other interesting parts that a lot of people aren't aware is that Galbraith Mountain is one of, was, is one of the top mountain biking areas in, in the state and in the West Coast. I mean, it's, it's, it's nationally known, the, the trail system, and, and, and growing, so it's.
Well, and the number-one most recognized trail in the state of Washington.
Yes.
Yeah, for my, yeah.
And it does draw a lot of tourist money in. People come here to ride and, and they spend money when they're here, which is a good thing.
And we like them.
We like that.
And visit the ER, Michael says.
And go to Boundary Bay.
And go to Boundary Bay.
Yeah.
And there are many other fine establishments. Excellent. Okay, and then lastly, we had a presentation with our city finance director, Brian Henshaw, on city sources of revenue. I think I said it earlier, and I'll say it again, it was scintillating and prepared us for our budget work session later, after that. And that was it from the afternoon. Is there anything else anyone wants to add from that report? Seeing none. I'm going to move into approval of minutes.
Move approval of the September 22nd's minutes.
Okay.
Who seconded?
Me. Well, you can give it to her, it's her night anyway tonight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, and they're from September 22nd, is that correct? Let me look at mine.
Yeah.
September 22nd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Jack Weiss absent.
Actually, I was gonna abstain because I was absent.
I'm sorry, thank you, Pinky. Motion passes five-zero with Jack Weiss absent and Pinky Vargas abstaining. Five-zero-one. It's five-zero-one. These are very hard reports to give. Okay. Is there any old or new business this evening?
I have a combination, old and new business. The old business is, we're gonna have a public hearing on rental registration on the 27th of October. The new business is, are we still thinking possibly about having it at the municipal court building? Because I can just visualize this place, I mean, you saw it tonight, how crowded it was, but I can visualize it being way, and, and one thing that angers people, they can't get in and testify, or they have to watch it out on the TV out in the foyer, it doesn't go well, so that's something maybe you could work on with Dale and see if it's available, because Terry remembers, we've had some pretty Yep. long evenings over at that building, and this, I think, is gonna be one of them.
Okay, Roxanne?
Also with that, are we keeping the agenda somewhat light for that night, so it's not, I mean, because people might not get a chance to advocate for the one thing that they want, if it's not that.
Well, you guys put something on it the other day, but in general, yes, we are trying to keep it light.
It's just something to think about.
Yes.
It's gonna be.
I think we only have two or three other hearings in there.
One is presumed to not really
It won't last.
turn anyone out, and, yeah, we have a couple other items of substance, but not too much. We're definitely keeping it lighter than normal. We can discuss moving it to the municipal court building. Linda?
There may be issues with this sire system.
Sire system. I believe that's what was brought up to me originally when we mentioned.
So I will strategize a solution and do my best. That's all I can do.
Can we hire a masseuse to go around?
We can hire a masseuse. Is that for us or people who are testifying?
To get us to the meeting, us.
I don't know how that would look. I don't know about that.
It's gonna be a long night.
Any other old or new business? Pinky?
I just had a request. We had a reminder tonight about the safety issues on Alabama Street, and wondering if we could get an update, doesn't have to be tonight, obviously, but on the Alabama Street project, and if we've received any feedback from whether or not they are going to accept our proposal.
Yes, I think they accepted our proposal, so I'll let Ted.
Yes, thank you, that's a great question. As you recall, we submitted the council's proposal to WashDOT. WashDOT has approved that. We're in the process now of actually amending some of the contract documents with the revised scope, but we've got indication from the DOT that they support the modifications that council made, so we're still on schedule to make the actual improvements in 2015 that include all of the aspects of the project that council approved, and that would also include lowering the speed limit, which council approved at that time.
That's great news, thank you for that.
Thank you, Pinky. Okay, any other old or new business? Seeing none, and this is a little out of order, but then we did have a work session on the 2015-2016 Bino budget in the mayor's boardroom, where we covered three topics, the Bellingham Public Development Authority, the executive department, and the legislative department, and it was fairly fast. There were very, very little changes to the executive and legislative department budgets, and there were no motions to add funding for the PDA, so there were no amendments to the mayor's budget, and we were out of there fairly quickly. Anything else anyone wants to add to that? Michael?
Could we just mention that the next budget work session will be in one week, 11 o'clock, also mayor's boardroom, open to the public, and I believe the departments will be police and fire?
Might, might be shifting.
Well, anyway.
Well, I think that what we found today is when we're limited on what we put on, in case there's no questions or we don't go on, then, then we can obviously add something, and there's about three departments that are very simple, so legal, finance, municipal court, and library.
Legal's not simp.
Oh, it is.
Maybe money-wise, but not the other.
Complex, yeah.
So we can, we can, we, we need to, you know, send out notice, but we can potentially put some things on that then we could carry over.
Okay.
Okay, but to correct, it's not police and fire, I was wrong about that, it sounds.
Brendan Hendrich, mayor's office. So next, next Monday, what we had envisioned was finance, legal, museum, and municipal court, and then on the 27th would be human resources and police. To the mayor's point, we wanna make sure we properly notice the work that we're gonna cover, so we will, what I think we can do is put all of the remaining departments on the next agenda bill. We do an agenda bill for the special meeting and for the regular meetings, just put all of the remaining departments so that we can cover as much as possible. Does that make sense?
It's a two-hour meeting, but we'll fill the time and use our time wisely, yeah. Sounds good. Yeah. Yes. Okay, thank you, and thanks for bringing it up, Michael. So next Monday, 11 to 1, and the mayor's boardroom is open to the public as we discuss the budget. And I think that is it from Committee of the Whole, so I'll report out from executive session. This afternoon, we had three items scheduled. First was potential litigation, potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter and a potential property acquisition matter, information only, no action was taken. The second item was potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. Direction was given, no action. Direction was given, no action taken. The third item was potential property acquisition and this item was canceled. Next up is the mayor's report.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate the council for making history tonight and Roxanne for bringing forward the resolution. Yeah, it was obviously something that was very touching and I appreciate you bringing up our friend from Skagit County because that was, I appreciate that. So having said that, the other thing that got brought up today, an old business that I did get an update on, Roxanne had asked about the ASB Trail, which hopefully will be open next spring. And it won't be open all the way, it will be open part of the way, but we will also have a better connection from Squalecum Harbor, so that will be a positive thing that's going to happen too. So we're excited about that. The, as you probably know, we did offer Rick Sepler from Port Townsend, the planning director job. He's so excited to take it that he's starting work this week on a part-time basis. Anybody have a place for him to live until his wife relocates? Let me know. We're all really happy and really excited and looking forward to what we believe he can bring to our planning and community development, so that is pretty exciting. And like I said, he was, he was contacting us to let me know when his, what his phone number was, so that we certainly couldn't miss getting a hold of him as soon as possible. He is currently the community services director in Port Townsend, but he also is the manager of the parks program, the pool facilities, and I can't remember what else. They had some budget cuts down there, so he has quite an extensive background and I'm looking forward to introducing him to the council and I think you'll, you'll enjoy working with him. Earthquake drill on Thursday, 6:16 on 1016, drop, cover, and hold. And will be evacuated in city hall in case you're here. I think that we're going to be going into more detail about Samish Way, but on the 27th we'll be bringing the resolution to council that we discussed. We are, continue to work with the property owners. Hopefully, there'll be a good resolution of that and I look forward to the future for what's going to happen on Samish Way. I mentioned about the surplus presentation. We'll be happy to bring all the potential surplus property forward so you can get a better look at it. The legislative goals, oh, I think I covered everything except for the things that you need to approve. You have three approvals and three information. The first is Jeff Medaw as the South Hill Primary Representative and Bobby DeBoer as the South Primary Representative for the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee. Reappointment of Ben Millar to the CDA Board. Mayor's appointment of Peter Heard to Parks and Recreation Board. I need an approval on the reappointment of Jim Birkey to the Transportation Commission.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And also the reappointment of Tom Weller to the Transportation Commission.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Reappointment of Barbara Ryan to the Museum Foundation Board.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And the reappointment of Bob Ross to the Design Review Board.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
Unless you have some questions or comments to make, that's the end of the mayor's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
She's got that down.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Terry's on Derrit all the time already.
Consent agenda passes six-zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 20555 and ordinance relating to land use, planning, and zoning, specifically rezoning approximately 10 acres in Area 1 of the Meridian Neighborhood and creating a new subarea 1A. In the Meridian Neighborhood zoning table and zoning map, the creation of Area 1A will allow the full range of the city's planned industrial uses in addition to those already permitted uses in Area 1 Meridian Neighborhood.
Move third and final.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knudsen?
Yes.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Olaquist?
No.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Ordinance passes five-one. Jack Weiss excused. Agenda Bill 20572 and ordinance accepting North Cascade's Audubon Society's donation of Scatters Pond property.
Move third and final.
Second.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knudsen?
Yes.
Kathy Lehman?
Aye.
Michael Olaquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
Ordinance passes six-zero. Jack Weiss excused.
And we are adjourned.